It's recording in progress.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you all to the Whitehall City Council Meeting of January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. If we got foot, please all rise for homeless silence, followed by the pledging of allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Alden, would you please call roll?
Dixon.
Here.
Elmore, present. Coniston, present. Kanter.
Present.
Heth. Smith, present. Bailey.
Present.
President.
Present.
Mr. President, at this time, I'd like to move to excuse the absent member.
Second. There's been a motion by Mr. Bailey, second by Mr. Kanter, to excuse the absent member. Any discussion? Ms. Alden, please call roll.
Dixon.
Here. I'm sorry. Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Kanter.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
The absent member has been excused. At this time, I now accept a motion for the approval of the January fourth, two thousand and twenty-two agenda and regular meeting minutes.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second. There's been a motion by Ms. Coniston, second by Mr. Kanter, for the approval of the January fourth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting minutes. Any discussion? Ms. Alden, please call roll.
Dixon.
Yes.
Elmore.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Kanter.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
The January fourth, two thousand and twenty-two agenda and regular meeting minutes have been adopted. This time, we have a special presentation by Marcus J. Salter, QMHS Housing Stability Specialist and Community Mediation Services of Central Ohio. Good evening.
Good evening.
And sir, just so you know, we have folks in, seeing as you're on your own up there, you've got six feet, if you'd like to remove your mask.
It can orient you a little bit better. I was falling up over here anyway.
Yeah, terrible thing about this.
So, thank you for the invite to the council. Again, my name is Marcus Salter. I'm with Community Mediation Services of Central Ohio. So, I have like twelve slides, fifteen slides. I'm kind of going through these real quick. So, one of the things we're doing in Community Mediation Services is our main focus is eviction prevention, housing stability. So, I'm sure we all have, you know, heard kind of what's going on with the housing. Right now, Franklin County, we look at what we call a three-fold housing issue. So, we have homeless crisis, an eviction crisis. We have homeless crisis, eviction crisis, right? So, those are the two mains. But the third one is lack of affordable housing, and they're all related. So, I have, I do a lot of work, twenty years working with the homeless population, been here with mediation services for the last five years. And one of the things that I've really gotten in touch with is that we can't buy our way out of this situation. We can build more, but there's so much when it comes to the education piece, how do we keep people in their house, right? So, a lot of mistakes that we see are, we know the number one reason people lose their housing, right? When it comes to eviction, not paying the rent. Number two, prices have gone up.
We've got your slides back.
Rent, there we go. So, been around for, where are we at?
Back up, Bailey.
Who's controlling?
Hi, I was going to give you back the laptop.
Okay. All right. Let's see, let's get this one. So, Mediation Services have been around since over thirty years. We try to help people resolve peaceful conflict in a professional, cool heads prevail, as they say. So, we try to come in, we try to engage the community, do a lot of work in the community. We try to help people resolve these issues, and we also educate them in the process. So, mediation landlord tenant conflict, neighborhood dispute, workplace dispute, organizational conflict, those are all things that we focus on. We also do some in-house trains as well. I can get this information out because this is kind of longer than I really want to kind of focus on. So, since two thousand and eleven, we've really been focused on tenant landlord. So, we're at the courts. Our goal is really to get ahead of any of the eviction filings. So, we want to look at some numbers right quick. Out of eighty-eight counties in Ohio, Franklin County were number one in evictions. So, we talk nationally. Columbus is considered a top ten large city when you get into talk about evictions. Top ten large cities. Number one is New York City. Number two is Indianapolis City, Indiana. Number three is Houston, Texas. Number four, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. Number five, San Antonio, Texas. Number six, Charlotte, North Carolina. Number seven, Columbus, Ohio. Number eight, Jacksonville, Florida. Number nine, Chicago, Illinois. Ten Detroit, Michigan. So, we're looking at Ohio, number one, number seven nationally. So, people ask me, why are people losing their housing in Columbus, Ohio at such a high rate? Seventeen thousand, this is pre-pandemic. Pre-pandemic, we had over eighteen thousand eviction files per year. So, Ms. Elmore, she asked me to look at some numbers. So, I went in, we have access to Franklin County database, just in the four-three-two-one-three area code, zip code, I mean, eleven thousand evictions filed last year. So, we look at overall, there's fifteen thousand in Franklin County, but over eleven hundred came here, came right through here in Whitehall. So, we want to know why. So, we talk about the affordable housing. We have people trying to make, trying to work two or three jobs just to try to pay their rent. We have individuals, we look at the numbers, right? So, we crunch a lot of numbers. We look at the numbers of people being evicted. Who's being evicted? I have another printout that we had, that I had really looked at. And there were certain, certain communities, certain areas here that we looked at of the eviction filings. Streets like Napoleon, Bexley Park, East Point Ridge, Parkland. Is that Doni, Doni, D O N E Y?
Doni.
Doni, Fountain Lane, Iron Gate. So, this, you know, I could go on. And so, we look at who's living in those areas. One thing that we know, we look at evictions, who's being evicted? So, we know that in Franklin County, twenty African-American women make up twenty-two percent of the population. We know that twenty-two percent, seventy-seven percent, actually seventy-two percent are homeless. So, there's a disparity there, right? African-American women, children. So, we talk about what's affordable. The average one-bedroom right now in Whitehall is near eight hundred dollars. So, we serve a lot of, so the community that I work in and the different partnerships we have, most of them are dealing with families. So, the average woman will need two, three bedrooms. So, we talk about that affordability piece, and how do we keep people housed, and how do we get them? You know, one of the things I know as far as what we do with mediation, we try to do these workshops. We try to educate people on some of the myths and some of the facts that surround evictions, the resources. As a community, you actually, you want to ask yourself, what services are we asking or are we providing to help people stay in their housing? Is there rental systems available? Is there financial literacy courses being offered? Do we have working relationships with landlords? Because a lot of times landlords feel like they're left on the island when it comes to housing. No one's talking to them. We have people who are constantly working on behalf of the tenant, but who's working with both parties? That's one of the things about being a mediator, that we can kind of work with both parties. We're a neutral party. We served, last year, they were talking about seventeen thousand eviction filings. All of our information is involved in the court systems when it comes to literature. Ninety-six percent of our tenants that we serve, or hopefully ninety-six that come to our doors, are facing eviction. So, tenants call, how can people get connected with mediation services? They call us. Legal aid refers people to us at court. We're right there at court. We have mediators there at court. I'm more kind of in the community, doing these kind of presentations and doing workshops. Tenants are, we try to help them understand the eviction process. People call my office on a regular basis and say, hey, my landlord says at the end of the month, he's not going to pay my lease. Is he allowed to do that? And he is, right? So, just understand the eviction process, how it works. We try to screen, we work with everybody. There's no income requirement for what we do. Legal aid, job and family services, those are some of our partnerships that we formed in the community. We do two things to help people stay in their housing. We do what's called a pay and stay plan. The plan, the pay and stay plan normally is in place between thirty to one hundred and twenty days. It's a way for the tenant to get caught up on their rent, so landlord can receive their money and the tenant can stay housed. Because we know here in Franklin County, if a landlord files an eviction and the tenant gets caught up, that filing stays on their record. So, it's hard for that person to get out of that cycle. Because sometimes they feel like they're trapped in that housing because they have an eviction file on them, even though that payment may have been received by the landlord. So, we also do voluntary move-out plans. We get tenants, we are clear, they're three months behind, they're not going, they're probably not going to get caught up on their rent. They're looking for housing, they're looking for a job, they're trying to get caught up. So, we ask that landlord, don't file that eviction. Give that person to the fifteen, we're still going to try to help him get caught up on the back rent. We don't want that eviction to be held over that tenant's head as they move on. So, those are two things that we do, mediated agreements. Yeah, I said we're just kind of trying to fly through this. These numbers right here, eighty-five percent of the time tenants and landlords reach a voluntary agreement and they work with mediation. Half of the agreements provide tenant, provides a way for that tenant to get caught up on their rent, they can stay in their current housing, they can avoid that eviction. The other half of the agreements are move-out agreements, and that person does not have that eviction on their record. So, those two things that we really strive on, the benefits of mediation, the cost, our services are free. Landlords may not have to go through the filing. The cost of filing these evictions, the cost for legal fees, the cost of a re-attack. You work with mediation, this stuff can be eliminated. So, I'm kind of going to get off of this a little bit because I think we're, what we really want to focus on is, you know, as a community, how do we keep people housed? What's the affordable housing look like? We see that nationally compared to Columbus, a person should really only be spending anywhere from thirty-five to fifty percent of their income on rents. Here in Franklin County, low-income families spend over seventy percent of their income just on rent. So, when we're talking about, well, you know, I agree with you saying, oh, it's like, oh, they just need to go and get a job. Well, that sounds, you know, that sounds good, right? That's in the sounds right now in this market. They say there's a lot of jobs out there. I'm still, I'm still not sure where I stand on all that either. But we need to look at what are we doing as a community as far as partnerships? I can speak for mediation services, we don't get a lot of referrals from this community as far as the help that we can provide. And so, that's one of the reasons I really wanted to come out here today, to talk about how we can extend our services. How can we be involved in conversations when it comes to affordable housing? What is that affordable housing going to look like? Who's going to be eligible for it? We have a lot of people in our community right now who, you know, when eviction moratorium ended a few months ago, it helped a lot of people stay in their housing, but what a lot of people don't understand is that rent, it ain't going anywhere. So, you have a couple entities that we use, IMPACT, Compass Program. There are some smaller agencies out there who provide rental assistance, but they're overwhelmed. So, when I got a landlord who says, okay, I'll work with this guy, but how long will it take for me to get the rent money? I can't answer that question because of the backlog that some of these agencies are experiencing trying to get that rent money out there. So, I just really just wanted to speak a little bit about, you know, how we can partnership, how we can be, make ourselves available to, for mediation services. Our workshops are a great way to start. I do these workshops in area homeless shelters, treatment centers, wherever we can get at least ten people in a room to talk about housing. One of the things that we looked at is the ten biggest myths. There are a lot of myths that lead to the misunderstanding. I always say there's a lot of misinformation from misinformed people that's been spread out here through our community. So, we look at the participants, they come through our workshop, most of them, ninety percent score at least eighty percent or higher. They receive a certificate of completion at the end of the workshop. And we go in the system, one year after attending our workshop, eighty-six percent have no longer involvement with the court system when it comes to eviction. Because now they've taken the time to understand what that process looks like. So, that's kind of just what I want to talk about today. And I don't know if there's questions we can open up. I don't want to get too much into the presentation as far as our, but I think there may be some questions here to answer.
Marcus.
Go ahead.
You said that there were seventeen thousand on average evictions in Franklin County here. Okay, I didn't understand, the four-three-two-one-three code, or zip code, was it eleven thousand evictions or eleven hundred evictions?
Eleven thousand. I'm sorry, one thousand, one hundred and sixteen.
Eleven hundred.
I messed it up there. So, we had, so we had over a thousand evictions in this one area.
That's still a lot. That's a huge amount.
That's a huge amount.
Yes.
That's a huge, especially when you look at, because when I worked in the homeless shelter system, I never associated a person coming through those doors with an eviction. Right? Because we're so quick to say, oh, we don't have addiction, but we forget about the eviction piece. And a lot of, most, I want to say eighty percent of people that come to the homeless shelter system have a recent eviction.
Yes. Okay, I have to, I have to agree with you on that.
Okay.
It's definitely a problem and with, in our area, our schools and our kids face the brunt of this.
Right.
So, I think Whitehall is committed to trying to reduce the eviction amount in our area and would like to get you to see how the city can support, you know, your program. So, we'll get together after, you know, later.
Okay. Yeah, you know, what you're touching on is what we call eviction fallout. Because sometimes we're just focused on the parents.
Yes.
The kids are missing school.
Oh, kids.
Right?
It's really rough.
Yeah.
It's rough, yeah.
Ms. Summer.
Thank you, Mr. President. You stated that, first of all, thank you for coming and giving us information that I believe is much needed, especially because we're going through a source of income. We just kind of, we had source of, source of income, and we have some affordable housing stuff, and we know that homelessness is a big issue, not just here in Whitehall, but in Franklin County. So, thank you for providing that quick information. Now, you stated that once the eviction is done, it stays on the record. Are, let me, help me understand that once it goes through your processes, it's no longer on the record?
No, well, the filing, so the eviction filing.
Okay.
So, a lot of times, and we're trying to talk to landlords to get away from this.
Okay.
A lot of times, they'll use that filing as a way to motivate the tenant. If I file on them, then they got to go and find resources and whatever to help them. So, we try to do something about not filing that eviction, because even though we may get them linked up to IMPACT or Compass Program who has that rental assistance, because that landlord has filed, it's on their record. So, here, I got a tenant who now, been living there three years, got a recent eviction from the very same place that they're living in. So, they did want to move, so we talk about personal development. We talk about empowerment. But if sometimes a person feels trapped, like I have to stay here, you know, we talk to them, we haven't even started talking about conditions, right? So, we talk about some individual living in conditions that you would not believe. And a guy going record and says, seniors, we have a lot of seniors in our community who don't know where to go, who don't know who to ask for help when it comes to conditions of their union. But because they've been living there for fifteen years, they don't want to say anything. So, those are the things that we want to really focus on. But when it comes to that eviction, yeah. So, we don't, we don't, we try not to get it filed. They go to court, even if the case is dismissed because the landlord has received their money, that filing is still there. Now, they can go back to court later on and try to petition the court. Franklin County has a new thing where they can go, they don't, they don't call it expungement. There's a process where if they have it possibly removed, if they meet the criteria, so that's a whole nother, you know, apples, as we say, apples in orange.
So, the effort or the emphasis is to get people connected with resources and how to deal with this issue before there has to be a filing?
I tell, sooner than later. Most tenants, I tell them right now, and I always say, there's, there's, there's a tenant somewhere right now who knows they're not going to have February's rent. So, don't wait till March and ask for help. Reach out now, because now we can put a plan in, and it's a, it's a backlog. Everywhere you go when it comes to rental assistance, there's a backlog. There's documentation that you have to upload, there's picture ID, social security cards, proof of income. So, it's not, it's not, it's not an easy process.
Thank you. Ms. Smith.
Do eviction records ever fall off, like after five years? They're forever?
Not like screening tickets.
That's one, that's screening. But yeah, that's, that's one of the biggest myths that we see. A lot of people think, oh, they come off your record after seven years. That's not true.
In Franklin County currently, if somebody has an eviction on their record, how many opportunities are there to find that second chance housing? Because like you got it and now you're stuck.
Yeah.
Where do you find housing? How limited are their options?
Well, at one, at one time, as a system, we had created what we call, what we call second chance landlords. But though that list is kind of starting to dwindle, because what we're starting to see now a lot here in Franklin County is that a lot of those private landlords that were kind of some second chance landlords, there's out-of-time investors now coming in buying those properties. Or they're coming in, first thing they do is they take me off that list because they, they're looking for a certain type of client, a certain type of tenant. So, that second chance landlord is really, they're there, but you, it's, it's a lot of work to, to try to locate those individuals who are willing to give people second chance. Especially, and if you talk about someone who may have an old felony and a recent eviction and working a maybe twelve bucks an hour job. Most landlords look at that as, huh, that's a heck of a gamble, right? So, that's where we try to come in, that's where the relationship building with landlords, bringing in some new landlords. Because a lot of times, when you go through these different programs, a lot of these agencies use the same landlords. So, developing new partnerships, developing new landlords is key and essential to, to hope we can kind of curb this housing crisis that we're in right now.
You, you said, oh, you brought it down to eleven hundred in four-three-two-one-three. And some of the streets that you said are actually outside of Whitehall, four-three-two-one-three will go out to, you'll fix, you'll go out to change road. And I'm going to assume that probably ninety-five percent of these or more are all apartments. Do you know what the percentage is that, of the residents that are getting assistance, housing assistance, before they come to you, after they've been served the papers for eviction?
That's a good question. I don't, I don't really have a number, but I do know that a lot of them have waited too long. They waited too late in the game, as they say. And that's, you know, that's one message that we just keep trying to pound away is, don't wait. It's easier to call the agency and say, I need assistance for eight hundred fifty dollars, instead of calling, I need twenty-three hundred. You know what I'm saying? So, so that's where that percentage, now, I can say this, but I would say there's a high percentage of mostly low-income families, high percentage of probably African-Americans, high percentage of people working two, three jobs, or maybe just on fixed income, right? Because now that we have a thing where people are on fixed income, so they're looking for housing, and landlord is saying, well, we need you to make three times the amount of income, three times the amount of rent. So, that right there in itself is very.
So, you're pretty much on a referral, or how do they find out about you?
Just referral. We, I have some information. I can leave our information. We can, people call us, everything. People can call us right there. Our main number, our director is Shelley Wettman. She's been around, I don't know if you've ever heard that name, but Shelley's been around doing this thing for over forty-something years, probably. And so, we, we're a small nonprofit, probably got fifteen employees, only three of us are full-time. And so, we're located off of Jefferson Avenue, but we service all of Columbus. So, if you got someone, I know a lot of times people, we get churches who call us, hey, we got a member here.
Well, that's what I was actually saying.
We got a member here. Can you help? They'll call. Schools, rec, rec centers, different programs call us quite a bit, so.
I'd like to thank you, Mr. Salter, for coming and making the presentation. It seems that affordable housing is really a big thing right now. It's gotten out of control. And I had a lady asking, she was on Facebook, and she was talking about getting evicted in the former English Village. And I didn't really have a resource for her. I don't know what the partnership is that you're looking for here within the city, but it's nice to be able to have this information to give to folks in case that is happening. Unfortunately, I feel that greed is outpacing sense in our society. When I lived in New York City, even in the worst neighborhoods, I lived in a low-income neighborhood in Brooklyn, and every, every spot where someone came to build a piece of housing. Luxury apartments.
Yeah, yeah.
And there were murders right next door, and I thought, well, what, luxury what? It's, it's because people have more of a love of money than they do of people.
Yeah.
And that's unfortunate, but so, thank you very much for your presentation.
And that's, you know, I go into something, well, I'm doing some new home business now, but I usually, I'm actually looking at properties. The landlord said, I need eighty-five month for this. I'm like, for this? You know what I mean? So, exactly, you hit it right on the head.
Thank you.
Mr. Salter, I too would like to thank you for coming out. These numbers you shared with us are eye-opening, to say the least.
Thank you.
Very good information. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move on to our whole public. We certainly invite any member of the public to come forward. You've got three minutes, and we, the question, you say your name and address for the record. Yes. And sir, you may take your vest out also, if that makes it a bit easier to breathe and talk.
Appreciate it. My name is Kevin Jones. I live at the Los on the intersection of Broad and Hamilton. I wanted to talk about the appointment of the treasurer position from the city. Just had a few words.
Yes.
Good evening, President Potter, members of council, mayor, and city officials. Voting is the foundation stone of political action. Those were the words of Dr. King. And as we celebrated his twenty-seventh National Day of Service yesterday, I'm reminded of the fact that he stood for things like inclusion. In recent years, we've taken that idea of equity and embraced it, but we forgot about the idea of inclusion. Inclusion is critical to be a part of the process of democracy and community. With the current vacancies in the administration for a city treasurer, I have one simple request, to be a part. There's no better opportunity for Whitehall residents to be civically engaged beyond the ballot box than now. And so, I'm advocating on behalf of all the residents of Whitehall to be a part of the process, whether that is a public forum, a community town hall. It's important for us to be engaged and to be a part of what's going on in the local government. So, I appreciate you and the opportunity to be here today.
Thank you for coming forward and look forward to seeing you again.
Absolutely.
Does anybody else wish to come forward? So, you know one. We'll now move on to our standing committee reports. Administration and Financial Management Chairperson Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Church and Financial Management did meet last week. Our minutes are on file. We have a number of items to introduce tonight for council's consideration. And we will meet again next Tuesday, probably right at about six-thirty, right here.
Thank you. Community and Elder Advocacy Chairperson Dixon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Community and Elder Advocacy met last week. And I don't think that we have anything on the agenda tonight, but we intend to, and I suppose we will meet next week at six-thirty here at the dais. Thank you.
Thank you. Community Standards and Enforcement Chairperson Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Potter. Community Standards and Enforcement did meet last week. We have two items, items on the agenda tonight that were tabled from the last public meeting. We did meet last week, and we will meet again next week.
Thank you. Economic Development Chairperson Kanter.
Thank you, Mr. President. Economic Development last week. Our minutes are on file. We do have a couple pieces of legislation tonight, and we'll meet again here next week after six-thirty.
Very good. Thank you. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services Chairperson Coniston.
Thank you, President Potter. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services also met last week. Our minutes are on file, and we'll meet again next week, right here, six-thirty.
Six-thirty it is. I'll make it up. Public Safety Chairperson Almar.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Safety did meet. I'll thank the council personally that presented my absence. We have a couple pieces of legislation looking for favorable passes. We have our minutes on file. We'll meet again on Tuesday, six-thirty. Thank you.
Thank you. Parks Reform. Parks Recreation, Chairperson Heck is not with us this evening. Mr. Cantor has so graciously agreed to report.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do know Parks and Recreation met last week because I ran it, uh, our minutes are on file. Uh, we have another legislation on the books tonight, but we do have finally an employee of the year out of the parks. Mr. Chuck Thacker, and I want to congratulate you. Very much deserved. We'll meet again next week back here at six thirty, or so.
Very good. Thank you. Official reports, Mayor Maynor.
Uh, good evening, and, uh, we'd just like to ask for favorable consideration of ordinances, uh, one twenty-seven, one twenty-eight of twenty twenty-one, and also favorable consideration of ordinances, uh, two through four. All of those have to do with contracts, union contracts. I would be remiss if I didn't have the opportunity, uh, to say thank you to our employees of the year. Uh, these employees are what makes, uh, Whitehall the great city that it is. Because all of you care so much about how you do your job and how you interact with the public and with each other that, uh, that's the reason why you were chosen as employee of the year and also the, uh, great performance that you give day in and day out. And, uh, so thank you so much to Casey Thomas, Chuck Thacker, Ben Leonard, and Tanner Williams. Uh, I'm, I'm so grateful for you and thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, City Administrators, Woodruff.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I have no official report. Uh, I would like to echo, uh, the mayor's sentiments, uh, congratulating all of our, uh, twenty twenty-one employees of the year. Chuck, it's nice to see you put on a suit.
What are you going there?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. St. Trinity Bivens is not with us this evening. Uh, City Auditor, Quinsel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no official report tonight, but, um, I do ask for favorable consideration of Resolution seven, twenty twenty-two. Uh, and just to explain to the newest members of the council, uh, these are then and now certificates. Uh, all that that means is we have an invoice that we received prior to having a purchase order to allow us to pay it. Uh, these were, uh, from a fuel purchase, uh, at the end of December and, um, which the, you know, the invoice came in January. And the other is for a service agreement renewal, uh, came in in early January. And we, the mayor and I met, uh, for border control just last week. So those will be taken care of, but that's, that's why we have the then and now process. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Director of Public Service, Van Greg.
Uh, I have, uh, no, uh, official report, but I would like to congratulate all the employees of the year and also ask for a favorable consideration for Resolution one, two thousand and two.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, the following official reports have been filed in the council office since our last meeting, and that would be the mayor's report to council for December twenty twenty-one. Communications, petitions, and claims. We have three items listed on the agenda this evening. First one being notice from the Ohio Department of Liquor Control for a new D-one and D-two liquor permit for Golden Cafe House LLC, DBA Golden Cafe House, two hundred K, South Hamilton Road, Whitehall, Ohio. The second item is notice from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control for a new D-five liquor permit for TJ's Country Place Incorporated, DBA TJ's Country Place, three fifty South Hamilton Road, Whitehall, Ohio, four, three, two, one, three. And the last item we have is notice to the Ohio Department of Div, Division of Liquor Control for a new C-one liquor permit for Dolgin Midwest LLC, DBA Dollar General Store, one, two, one, nine, two, six, three, thirty-eight, six, six, East Broad Street, Whitehall, Ohio, four, three, two, one, three. At this time, I would accept a motion for election of President Pro Tem.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion for Councilman, uh, Bailey as a president of Pro Tem for the term starting in, uh, January first, twenty twenty-two.
I would like to second that.
There's been a motion made by Mr. Cantor, seconded by Ms. Conneson, for the appointment of Mr. Bailey for President Pro Tem. Any discussion? Ms. Al, please call roll.
Dixon?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bailey.
Standing, and thank you, members.
Welcome. Much deserved, Al.
Yes, and I personally would like to thank, um, Mr. Bailey very much. Uh, he was invaluable this last term, and I look forward to his, uh, assistance in council moving forward. Ms. Al, would you please call roll on whether each member of council has given a copy of each item of legislation listed on the agenda prior to the minute to the meeting, including any add-on legislation?
Dixon?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Thank you. We're now going to move out of order just a little bit and move to our first reading, uh, specifically to our resolutions. Uh, we'll start with Resolution two, twenty twenty-two, recognizing Casey Thomas as the twenty twenty-one administrative support employee of the year and awarding her a one-time payment of three hundred and fifty dollars as additional compensation and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, it is my pleasure to introduce Resolution two, twenty twenty-two, and move for suspension of all rules.
Second.
A motion has been made by Mr. Bailey, seconded by Ms. Conneson, to introduce Resolution two, twenty twenty-two, and move to suspend all rules. Any discussion? Ms. Al, please call roll.
Dixon?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion for adoption by Mr. Bailey, seconded by Ms. Conneson. Any discussion? Ms. Al, please call roll.
Dixon?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to have, uh, City Administrator Woodruff step forward and read the resolution and present to Liston.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Casey, Elmore, is your favorite partner?
Is, is that microphone on, by the way?
I, I have no idea.
I think we turned it off.
No, I don't think it was on. Okay. Uh, so I'll read the resolution and then I do, I thought that's really. Uh, and then I'll, uh, uh, read, uh, some, some more additional words, but, uh, recognizing Casey Thomas as the twenty twenty-one administrative support employee of the year and awarding her a one-time payment of three hundred and fifty dollars as additional compensation and declaring an emergency. Whereas it is the desire of this council to annually recognize and honor city employees who have performed their duties faithfully and in a consistent, persistent, and outstanding manner. I wanted to read, if I could, Mr. President. Um, I, I can't speak in highly enough about the job that Casey does, uh, for, uh, the city, for our organization, uh, but I thought it was maybe more appropriate to hear from a number of the folks who work day in and day out with Casey. Uh, Casey is the type of coworker who will always help you out in a pinch, balancing outstanding helpfulness and humor when mistakes are made or a last-minute request needs filled in. She has a seemingly endless amount of patience for fellow employees, no matter their request, and is exactly who I would want training others on, on customer service. With staff turnover, she's quickly become one of our top go-to people for institutional knowledge in the service department. I was very pleased to learn that Casey Thomas was recognized as employee of the year. Casey is absolutely deserving of this honor. She is a critical component in our daily operations of the city service department. Her expertise is vast, and she is the go-to for the entire section. I know that I can always count on Casey to answer my questions or to help figure out who I need to ask. She is always quick to reply to an email and easy to share a joke with. I just wanted to write a short note regarding Casey Thomas's election as employee of the year. Every morning when I arrive at work, Casey greets me with a smile and a good morning. She is effective at her job, and she is also willing to help me when I have questions. Although I'm thankful for all of my coworkers, I'm sure that Casey is the reason why the service department operates as smoothly as it does. So I would agree to that. So Casey, this is, uh, this is Casey's, uh, second time winning, uh, this award in our apartment. And, uh, Casey, congratulations and thank you.
Resolution three, twenty twenty-two, recognizing Chuck Thacker as the twenty twenty-one labor service employee of the year and awarding him a one-time payment of three hundred and fifty dollars as additional compensation and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, it is my pleasure to introduce, uh, Resolution three, twenty twenty-two, and move for the suspension of all rules.
My pleasure to second.
Uh, motion has been made by Ms. Conneson, seconded by Mr. Cantor, to introduce Resolution three, twenty twenty-two, and to suspend all rules. Any discussion? Ms. Al, please call roll.
Dixon?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion for adoption by Ms. Conneson, seconded by Mr. Cantor. Any discussion? Ms. Al, please call roll.
Dixon?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Resolution three, twenty twenty-two has been adopted. At this time, I would ask, uh, Director Sorrell to come forward and Mr. Thacker as well, let's see if they read the resolution, make the presentation.
Thank you, council, and thank you, President. We are grateful to be here. Uh, and Chuck, your resolution reads, whereas it is the desire of council to annually recognize all of city employees who have performed their duties faithfully and in a consistent, persistent, and outstanding manner. And whereas Chuck Thacker is worth exceptionally hard on bringing team together, is always willing to assist with events, and is a positive worker. Whereas Chuck Thacker exceeds expectations and is responsive to the city and its customers' needs. Now therefore, be it resolved by the council of the city of Whitehall, Ohio. The council of the city of Whitehall does hereby recognize and honor Chuck Thacker as the two thousand and twenty-one service employee of the year and might be present and express its appreciation to him for dependable and dedicated service. Thank you, Chuck.
And for that to be, you are welcome, Chuck. Stay here for just a moment. I do not have the lead listing like Zach, thank you for the warning, Zach. Um, but we cannot express enough about Chuck's three years of service of the city of Whitehall. Chuck graduated from Whitehall early, and it is, like, I think everyone there knows Chuck Thacker. And it has been a pleasure having him join our team. He is always willing to take on and learn about anything and everything we do, which is everything from facilities management to helping us run events and, you know, even get up and help teach classes and environmental education sessions. And so everything Chuck is doing and everything he has committed to for our city just makes our parks department even better. And you all see that in our parks, and I hope you're hearing that. And so Chuck, we can't thank you enough for all the hard work and effort you put in and your dedication to our team. Thank you.
Good football, Coach, too. Don't forget that. It's good football, Coach. Resolution four, twenty twenty-two, recognizing Ben Leonard as the twenty twenty-one firefighter, paramedic employee of the year and awarding him a one-time payment of three hundred and fifty dollars as additional compensation and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, it is my pleasure to introduce Resolution four and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
A motion is made by Ms. Elmore, seconded by Mr. Bailey, to introduce Resolution four, twenty twenty-two, and move to suspend all rules. Any discussion? Ms. Al, please call roll.
Dixon?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Um, move for adoption, please.
Second.
Uh, motion for adoption by Ms. Elmore, seconded by Mr. Bailey. Any discussion? Ms. Al, please call roll.
Dixon?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Resolution four, twenty twenty-two has been adopted. At this time, Chief Moore would like to come forward, as well as Mr. Leonard, for the presentation of the resolution.
Good evening, everybody. Um, where it is the desire of this council to annually recognize and honor city employees who have performed their duties faithfully in a consistent, persistent, and outstanding manner. And whereas Ben Leonard has gone above and beyond his normal assigned duties. As union president, he recently took on a responsibility of organizing the four-unit breakfast, recent retirement parties, and promotion celebrations. This year's fire Christmas party, the honor guard of which he has become a member and financial planner. This year's Red Cross blood drive, and helped orchestrate the most recent department photographs. He organized and taught very in-depth EMS training. He also has become a pump operator for three unit and has done an exceptional job. Whereas Ben Leonard exceeds expectations and is responsive to the city and its customers' needs. And, uh, I want to thank Ben Leonard for being this kind of employee. I'll just tell you a couple stories. A few years ago, we were interviewing young employees, and a guy had come in and we interviewed him and like, man, that guy's really good. We need to hire this guy. So he left the room, another guy had come in, and I was like, forget that guy. We need to hire Ben Leonard. So that's the kind of guy Ben Leonard has been. Uh, last couple of years, you can imagine, the fire, fire division's been quite a grind for the employees, right? Ben's one of the guys that you constantly see coming in on his day off and asking to do extra things. So with that, we're very appreciative of his service for the city. Thanks.
Look at there. There you go. Resolution five, twenty twenty-two, recognizing Tanner Williams as the twenty twenty-one police officer employee of the year and awarding him a one-time payment of three hundred and fifty dollars as additional compensation and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, it's my pleasure to recognize or introduce Resolution five, twenty twenty-two, and move for the suspension of all rules.
I would second that, please.
Thank you. There's been a motion by Ms. Elmore, seconded by Mr. Dixon, to introduce Resolution five, twenty twenty-two, and move to suspend all rules. Any discussion? Ms. Al, please call roll.
Dixon?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
The council move for adoption?
Second.
A motion for adoption by Ms. Elmore, seconded by Mr. Dixon. Any discussion? Ms. Al, please call roll.
Dixon?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Resolution five, twenty twenty-two has been adopted. At this time, I'd like to please ask, uh, Chief Crispin, along with Mr. Williams, to come forward for the presentation of the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President, council. Uh, whereas is the desire of the council to annually recognize and honor city employees who have performed their duties faithfully and in a consistent, persistent, and outstanding manner. And whereas Tanner Williams has gone above and beyond his normal assigned duties, he is active in nearly every specialized function of the police department. Since two thousand and eighteen, he has served as a member of the crash team, our honor guard, peer support team, SWAT negotiator, bike patrol, breathing here, training officer, field training officer, officer in charge, and he is currently a school resource officer. He's done a lot, as you consider. In his spare time, he volunteers for the Starfish assignment and is a member of the Civil Air Patrol. Officer Williams is a great example of hard work and team player. If I might add, that was a lengthy list, and it's still, I don't know if it was even fifty percent. Uh, e- every time the, uh, other agencies are in need, or we've had officers injured or even killed unfortunately in the past, the first person, one of the first people to volunteer their time to go serve with those other departments is Tanner. Um, Tanner once told me that his sole purpose, not sole purpose, his main goal, uh, from years ago, having been in school and then experienced a dare officer, changed him a little bit. He said, all I want to do is become a school resource officer. I want to work with the kids. I want to work with the kids." And he is now a school resource officer, so he's doing a lot of these great things we just mentioned, to make communities safer, but he is absolutely changing the lives of the leaders that we have coming in the future out of school. So, congratulations, Tanner. Thanks for your service.
Good job, Tanner.
We will now move on to our third reading. And we have got ordinance one twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-one, amending the zoning map attached to Chapter eleven twenty-two of nineteen seventy codified ordinances of the City of Whitehall, Ohio, and have subsequently amended, changed the zoning on property located at thirty-five forty East Main Street and seven thirty-nine and seven twenty-one Maplewood Avenue, parcel numbers zero nine zero 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 two one twenty-two, zero nine zero 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 one eight ninety, zero nine zero 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 three six forty, zero nine zero 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 one nine hundred, zero nine zero 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 two four eighty-five, zero nine zero 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 three six thirty-eight, and zero nine zero 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 eight two forty, from R-three Residential District and General Commerce District GCD to A-two Apartment District, property owned by Mamak Company Incorporated, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance one twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-one, and move to adopt.
Second.
There's been a motion to adopt by Mr. Bailey, second by Mr. Cantor, of ordinance one twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-one. Is there any discussion on the motion? Ms. Ogden, please call rule.
Dixon?
No.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Ordinance one twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-one, has been adopted. Ordinance one twenty-eight, two thousand and twenty-one, amending the zoning map attached to Chapter eleven twenty-two, nineteen seventy codified ordinances of the City of Whitehall, Ohio, and has subsequently amended, allowing a special permit under eleven twenty-three point oh-six C-seven to allow an apartment dwelling structure containing more than twelve dwelling units on a property located at on thirty-five forty East Main Street and seven thirty-nine and seven twenty-one Maplewood Avenue, parcel numbers zero nine zero 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 two one twenty-two, zero nine zero 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 one eight ninety, zero nine zero 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 three six forty, zero nine zero 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 one nine hundred, zero nine zero 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 two four eighty-five, zero nine zero 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 three six thirty-eight, and zero nine zero 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 eight two forty, property owned by Mamak Company Incorporated, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance one twenty-eight, two thousand and twenty-one, and move to adopt.
Second.
Been a motion by Mr. Bailey, second by Mr. Dixon, to introduce ordinance one twenty-eight, two thousand and twenty-one for adoption. Is there any discussion? Ms. Ogden, please call rule.
Dixon?
No.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Ordinance one twenty-eight, two thousand and twenty-one, has been adopted. We have got no legislation under second reading this evening. This now brings us to our first reading, and we have ordinance two, two thousand and twenty-two, authorizing approving the mayor to sign a contract with the Paternal Order of Police, Capitol City Lodge Nine, for the contract term January first, two thousand and twenty-one, to December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce zero zero two, two thousand and twenty-two, and move for the suspension of all the rules, please.
Second.
There's been a motion by Mr. Cantor, second by Ms. Coniston, to introduce ordinance two, two thousand and twenty-two, and the suspension of all rules. Is there any discussion on the motion? Ms. Ogden, please call rule.
Dixon?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Thank you. Mr. President, move to adopt, please.
Second.
A motion to adopt by Mr. Cantor, second by Ms. Coniston. Any discussion? Ms. Ogden, please call rule.
Dixon?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Ordinance two, two thousand and twenty-two, has been adopted. Ordinance three, two thousand and twenty-two, authorizing and approving the mayor to sign a contract with Communication Workers of America, Local Number forty-three twenty, for a contract term January first, two thousand and twenty-two, to December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I want to introduce ordinance three, two twenty, or two thousand and twenty-two, and move for the suspension of the rules, please. Second.
A motion by Mr. Cantor, second by Mr. Dixon, to introduce ordinance three, two thousand and twenty-two, and to suspend all rules. Is there any discussion? Ms. Ogden, please call rule.
Dixon?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bailey?
The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt, please. Second.
A motion to adopt by Mr. Cantor, second by Mr. Dixon. Is there any discussion? Ms. Ogden, please call rule.
Dixon?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Ordinance three, two thousand and twenty-two, has been adopted. Ordinance four, two thousand and twenty-two, authorizing approving, amending the table of authorized personnel, one sixty-one point three seven D, of the codified ordinances titled Service Department and Street Employees, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I want to introduce ordinance four, two thousand and twenty-two, and move for the suspension of all the rules, please.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Ogden, please call rule.
Dixon?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended.
Thank you. Mr. President, move to adopt, please.
Second.
A motion to adopt by Mr. Cantor, second by Ms. Elmore. Any discussion? Ms. Ogden, please call rule.
Dixon?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Ordinance four, two thousand and twenty-two, has been adopted. Resolution one, two thousand and twenty-two, a resolution declaring it necessary to levy additional two point eight three mil tax levy for the purpose of providing and maintaining motor vehicles, communications, and other equipment, buildings, and sites for such building used directly in the operation of a police department, the payment of salaries for permanent or part-time police, communications, or administrative personnel to operate the same, including the payment of any employer contributions required for such personnel under Section one forty-five point four-eight or seven forty-two point thirty-three of the Revised Code for provision of ambulance or emergency medical services operated by a police department or for the payment of other related costs, and requesting the Franklin County Auditor to certify the total current tax valuation of the city to the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by that additional levy pursuant to Sections fifty-seven oh five point oh-three and fifty-seven oh five point nineteen J of the Revised Code, and declaring emergency. At this time-
Mr. President, if I could, at this time, we'd like to have Megan Meyer, Deputy Director of Public Affairs, and Chief Crispin provide a brief presentation on this piece of legislation.
Please come forward. And again, if you keep your social distance, I'd invite you to take your mask down if you find that a little easier for speaking and breathing.
All right. Good evening. Thank you, President Potter. Members of Council, it's a pleasure to be back in front of you after a few months away. On your agenda this evening is a resolution by which consideration, we would be initiating a process to put a property tax levy on the May primary election. And so, Chief Crispin and I are very briefly going to give you an overview. For anybody watching on Facebook Live or on YouTube, please do note that all these slides are also available on the city's website. I'd like to go through them and get some more background information. It's all there for you on the city's homepage. So without further ado, I'm going to go ahead and go over what we're going to do. Chuck, so what is the levy, and what is the consideration timeframe? Where are we in that process? Chief Crispin is going to dive into the police division budget, as well as some operational needs that they've seen over the last few years since initiating the Safer Whitehall Plan. The impact that this levy, if on the ballot, would actually have on residential property rates, and we'll get to who it affects, so it's not just residential, but commercial properties as well. And then what we will do in terms of providing public information throughout the process in advance of the May primary to residents to learn more about what this is and what it could look like for them. So with that, before Chief Crispin really gets into what is needed, just again, to back into the timeframe here, last week, you saw the introduction of what is called a statement of necessity. This is really just an initial assessment of what is the property tax value and total assessed value in the City of Whitehall, something the Franklin County Auditor would do. So the legislation that you're considering is just to initiate that process. And February first, we would ask you to consider a secondary piece of legislation that would actually inform the Franklin County Board of Elections to put on the May primary ballot the question that we're close with the levy, if you consider it. Moving forward, the actual ballot will be the third, and we're all talking about property tax year two thousand and twenty-two, so again, we pay that at year behind, so this will be counted near two thousand and twenty-three impact. So Chief Crispin's really going to get into the needs here, but before we do, just want to make sure everybody kind of has the overall numbers in front of them before we really dive in, right? So what are the things we're trying to do continually? Chief Crispin has shown you that they can continue to improve safety in Whitehall. And so, to do that, they really do think that to better their operations, they need to see an expansion and renovation of the existing police station here on South Hurley Road. Along with that would come a number of technology enhancements and some fleet improvements as well. With that, there's a secondary element of adding strength to the division, and so the addition of sixteen new officers has also been proposed. The total cost of those two things alone is approximately one point three million, sorry, one point three nine million dollars annually. For the police station element, it's a seven million dollar investment. That's proposed currently. The officers, it's about a ninety thousand dollar a year investment for each officer, with salaries, benefits, and overtime. You can see that about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year is a good approximation. That was in the plus, plus exactly, which is a good estimate. So how would that be paid for? One element to make it the construction, the expansion and renovation possible for the police station, you would go out for a general obligation bond in the amount of approximately seventy million dollars. And that would come with a five, I'm sorry, four hundred and ninety thousand dollar annual debt service to fund that. The levy itself, as proposed at the two point eight two two mils that you're seeing, would generate approximately seven hundred and ninety thousand dollars a year. That's what we're asking the Franklin County Auditor to verify if you can pass that piece of legislation. So of that seven hundred and ninety, you would see four hundred and ninety go to debt service for that seven million dollar general obligation bond, with the three hundred thousand dollars a year going to support officers. Now, that's not the full cost, so there's other elements helping to support the officers. One being of what is called a COPS grant. So Chief Crispin is going to get into that a little bit more, but it is something that we have received in the past. It's from the U.S. Department of Justice. And so, that is a grant that goes down at a slight in scale, so the year one grant amount actually is a little bit less than the next year, and the phase is different. With that, the general fund within count kick in and contribute the rest. So this is money that's already anticipated to be received revenue-wise for the city. And so, in year two, you'd see an approximate hundred and fifty thousand dollars terminating with about six hundred and thousand dollars in, into perpetuity, once that COPS grant does expire. And so, that's what you're looking at to support those officers moving forward. So with that, Chief Crispin is going to dive into the why. Why do you think we need these things, and what we can use to help them work?
Thank you, Megan. Mr. President, Council, Mayor. I know one of the things that is really important when we're asking for this return on these return on investment, right? The first thing I want to talk about before I talk about return on investment with the levy is to talk about return on investment you've already done for us already. I want to say thanks for that upfront. And that is, when you look here at two thousand and twelve to two thousand and seventeen, how much you have increased the police budget over those years. And back in seventeen, as many of you were here, you remember me proposing sort of, here's what we need as a department to reduce the crime rate. Here's the Safer Whitehall initiative, of we're asking you to help fund us with, and the community to participate with us on. And over that period, you saw a twenty-seven percent reduction in violent crime. Get thirty-three, thirty-seven at one point, but it dipped back down to thirty-three, and we held that for a little while throughout the nation. Violent crime is increasing, as we talked about in the previous council meeting. We're still holding, it's affecting us like everybody else, but it's still holding pretty steady, and we're happy with that. We had a thirty-eight percent reduction in robberies over that period, and this number forty-six is one really worked harder on, is now at fifty-four percent. And so, that's, we're proud to know that we have now passed that fifty percent mark in the City of Whitehall. That's what we got out of the investment we have had over the last few years. Thank you. Now, this is a chart we showed before, but I wanted you and the community to sort of see this. This is where we were in sixteen, this is where we are now. Our violent crime, again, has creeped up, it's creeping up, but our burglaries are still down, our robberies are down, and we still continue to focus on thefts as we always have, and promise that we can, we can do. This is a trend line to sort of show you what was happening when we initiated that strategic plan and a Safer Whitehall initiative in two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen, and we're in the place. We really focused hard on theft initiatives, as you can see with the green line, and drove down those violent crimes, robberies, and burglaries, just like we thought we would. The trend line is trending like everybody else is trending, and, but we're still applying those resources, and we were able to do that with some of those things that were given to us by Council and the mayor. But I don't want to just focus on what we do with these resources as far as arresting bad criminals and stuff. Prevention is a major part of what we do, and community outreach is a big part of that. One of the things we're very proud of, I know that certain council members and the mayor and others have partnered with us on this same initiative, the first one, for juveniles, which is the police initiated diversion program. And that diversion program, just the best way to explain it for you, for me, is to just to give you an example. So assuming that a young kid coming out of school was playing around with his friends, he throws a rock through your window, certainly that's an element of crime, but it's a kid like to force around with his family, with his friends. So we have the ability, rather than to enter them into the justice system, we have the ability to divert them from that at our level, rather than at the court level. And what that means is the Ju- the school resource officers and the people involved in this will take that young man, that young lady, and divert them by having them either A, write a letter to the person whose window they broke, do some community service, or even better, do some service for the person whose window they broke, and sort of make amends for their actions and learn a lesson like we all did when we were younger, rather than going right into the court system. We have a seventy-six percent success rate off that program. We've also had seven of those kids go through a program, some of you recognize, if you appear, where we teach them leadership skills and things of that nature, to allow them to go pass things like the National Guard test, to get into the National Guard, which isn't easy, so that they can get an education from the National Guard. And lastly, very important to me, and very important to our department, is the ability to hold town hall meetings and talk with the community. We was able to do twelve of those over that same timeframe. So when I started, we were at forty-eight officers. When I talk to the other officers that are in there, they've always been somewhere right around forty-eight officers. And many of you remember me sort of doing an analysis for you, which is one of the things I was hired for. When I did that analysis, I found that we needed 60 officers, and we have always needed 60 officers, and that hasn't changed. Now, we've been able to raise, to get the support from you folks, to get us as well as some grants, to get us six more officers, and we're now holding at 54, which is really good. It's been good for the department to be able to get ahead of some initiatives. But we still are at a need of 60 officers, and that's never changed. What this will do, this grant process will do for us, as you heard, we got six from the feds, here recently got approved of six new officers that are hired. But as Megan just explained, that's for three years, and that sort of goes away after those three years. And really, from my experience in applying for these every year, and we've gotten a few of the ones before that the same way, is that the federal government specifically wants you to demonstrate a commitment to the safety of your community. And so they look to see if you're going to be able to fund it, and they, they make you start to take that program over before the three years are even on. So that we're definitely going to need some assistance to get those additional three, even with the grant.
And so to reiterate, to Mr. Crispin's point, this chart specifically has helped to make, to help break down exactly how the COPS grant would be added to the levy contribution, would be added to general fund contributions, to make this possible moving forward. So again, that COPS grant does retire after three years. It is heavy at first, you see about 75% coverage of that $900,000. But then by year three, it's only about 25%, and then it fizzles out in year four, which means the city, that's when our contribution has to kick in. And we have to be able to show that we can do that to obtain those funds. So what the levy would help us do is kind of bridge that gap. So in first year, it'd be about $275,000 going towards those operating costs out of the levy proceeds, and in subsequent years, about $300,000 a year. And so that would be the contribution that we would ask for, the additional contribution that we would ask for to help make that happen.
So to add a little bit to, not just to the personnel, so as they would demonstrate through return on investment and our needs with employees, if you've been in a building, you know we need space for employees as well. We need a better trading facility and evidence room, things of that nature, dispatch center, we certainly need some serious improvement. I noticed that the first day I walked through the door, and then our, keep our fleet out of the water, not flooding and administrative issues we have in the building. So this includes upgrading the old building and additional space for not just these officers or future bro, who just, again, need a good 30-year plan or something like that. This is just a mock-up, this is what it could look like, but generally, if you look at this, one of the things that we talked to the architect about is making sure that even though we're meeting certain criteria that we have at the meeting with only security needs for vulnerabilities in the police department, we want it to still look welcoming. And so that's some of the stuff you're seeing around it. These are balances and things that prevent vehicles from ramming the building and things of that nature, and I won't get into the rest. One of the, the second thing that was important was this, we wanted to sort of embrace the history both of Whitehall and of the police department, and can we modernize it and sort of hang on to the, the old school look that we've got, so a cake and eat it too kind of question. So that's kind of what you're looking at. That's the entry point where they come in from the north, there's better parking that way, it's safer, across the street and so on. So that's coming from the north going south now. And as you remember, the Mayor dedicated the new future building, when it is built, to Officer Killman, Duty Terry Dow. So this is, you're looking at a historical, not only a historical dedication, but also a history of the department that will be dedicated to Officer Terry Dow. And lastly, this will help us modernize our dispatch center. It opens up the space. There's a lot of things we'll be able to do to be a lot more timely, a lot more responsive to the community, and give them quicker, faster resources.
So with that, how would it all be proposed and how would it actually impact our residents' property tax bill on an annual basis? So 2.822 mills is the amount that we came up with that would help reduce the $790,000 needed to get us to that $1.3 million, $1.39 million a year that we need to make, both the police renovation expansion and the additional six officers, officers possible. So for a Whitehall homeowner, the, and looking in a standard home, I mean, there's also a different set of criteria for seniors with a home set exemption. You'd be looking at about $98 annually, so that breaks down to about 20 cents a day. And that is for $100,000 in your home value, so that's something you could look at. But to reiterate, this would not just be Whitehall homeowners, it would be any property manager, commercial or residential, and possibly literally anybody who owns property in the community. So while you might be looking at $98 tax bills for a Whitehall homeowner who occupies their own home, you'd be looking at hundreds of thousands of dollars in tax bills to some of our commercial property owners, say, over on Poth Road in the airport, South Commerce and Tech Park. And so you would see their bill increase to, to help support this as well. It's not just your Whitehall residents and homeowners. So with that, so just to reiterate, to drag this home, the total mills, it's 2.822. That would help support an annual bond, or I'm sorry, a total bond is over $1 million with an annual debt service of $490,000, with the operating proceeds of $300,000 going to the cops with, or I'm sorry, the police officers with the general fund and COPS grants contributions as well. So this was a very high-level $50,000, you know, foot view of what this would look like, and we understand we're just now starting this conversation with the community. So should you all move forward and decide to go ahead and initiate the process, to put this on the main ballot, of course, there's more information to get out to the community. And so it would be our part, on part of the city, to do public information only, so to try to answer questions as best we can, but of course, to not approach the community only or the other. So we would do all of that through more safer Whitehall town halls. Chief mentioned, we already have 12, so we would do more of those. Given the current conditions, we would anticipate those being virtual. Of course, we would make opportunities available to learn more on the city website through the e-update and through postcards. If you understand that you have this dichotomous residence, you know, population, where some are online, some aren't, so we still want to make sure that they're getting literature given to them in their mailbox, and then potentially doing an opportunity guided special section that time of year again, and so we'll be doing that direct to residents as well to help keep them informed. With that, what questions do you have for Chief Crispin?
Mayor?
First of all, with the COPS grant, the money that the city would have to put in, the first year is, we would need to put in about 25%. Year two, we would need to put in about 50. Year three, 25. And year four, we would need to cover it all. So basically, that's quite a bit of money for the future. So I just wanted to make sure that that's what I'm seeing.
Yes, that is correct. And so the breakdown being that, yes, it would still be the city making the contribution from the levy proceeds.
And I do have a couple of questions. If this levy was approved, would this allow for more officers patrolling our neighborhood streets?
Absolutely, yes, Mayor.
Okay, that's, that's a good thing. And also, another question. Do you believe that these extra officers would allow the division to conduct more traffic enforcement, specifically speeding in neighborhoods?
Yes, Mayor, not only would it give them an opportunity to do more throughout the day, in some cases, a second shift, they give them a chance to do it, period, because they're just running from call to call to call. I know we go, you check this, you watch this road, we've got speeders on this road. They already didn't have roll calls sometimes because there are already two or three calls in need by time they start their shift, and it stays that way all the way to midnight shift, so. And the midnight shift comes in at all, so that would definitely help rule control. Most of that, most of them are going through second shifts.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Any other question?
Yes.
Ms. Elmore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Chief Crispin, and Megan for the presentation. From the, from the survey, I know that safety and affordable housing are overwhelmingly top issues in Whitehall. And also, as we see the success rate of juvenile diversion program by 76%, and this is just a comment, I would think that we do want to provide the resources needed in order for us to continue to see the successes that we're seeing from the police department. And I do have, not only police, but fire. And I do have a question with regards to how many officers have retired and the impact that it's had on the services that have been, been provided. Because I know there's been a lot of retirement, and there's probably going to be projected more retirement.
We, we have the same, the normal amount of retirements would typically happen every year. They're spread out, they don't go through periods where you won't have hardly any. We just, in the last year or two, aged out quite a few folks at the time. So when we have, when one more retires, it'll be a while after that we have no retirement. So hopefully, this levy would help us sustain that 60 for a while. But the retirement stays coming spurts. So it's just based on when they all come in. When the, when the city, the council decides to hire, provide more resources, more numbers, like for example, and I'll finish here, if we approve of this and the community is gracious enough to allow us to hire 60 officers, we will hire a bunch of ones over the next couple of years. Fast forward 30 years from now, they're going to have about 10, 15 retirements all the way, so they'll have the same similar decisions.
And, and a follow-up question is, what is happening to attract officers that reflect the community?
I'm sorry, say anything.
What, what, what process, or what do you have in place to attract more officers that are reflective of the community, as far as people call it?
We, what we have in place is we partner with a lot of different organizations, radio stations, community, the universities. One of the things we've found to be most successful, especially here recently, was just the lateral transfer, we were able to get approved, and we sort of are able to recruit from other agencies, and we have good benefits and good pay in Whitehall, so people want to come here from around the state of Ohio. And that's what's been helping us a lot lately with the diversity and things of that nature that can be appointed for us.
Thank you for your work.
When you touched on communications, could you briefly kind of explain what that means in a sense of call for service, whether it's fire or police?
Yes, we, right now, we have three, I always try not to use police lingo, but we have three stations, so it's the dispatch stations. Second shift is, he has those all three full, depending on time. We're hoping to open up a fourth seat, so potentially, if we do, there's, there's opportunities to expand services and communications down the road. So one of the bigger things is just if you, I know this is technical, getting into the weeds, but if you just lift up the back of that console, look behind it, you'll realize why the console was down so often. It's just being patched together with pieces that we're pulling from, sometimes from eBay and other places that are very ridiculous, such that have such an old system that the new ones won't fit in our current settings. So whenever you're able, and our IT does a great job, so I'm, they're tremendous how they're able to pull it off, but that's one of the major things that will do for us in, by expanding, having a much larger space and additional seats for this, other services down the road. Great, thank you.
I have two things. There's been a talk, I've heard folks mention, certainly on Facebook, that there was $750,000 that went to hiring new police, and I think that they don't understand necessarily, or they believe that that goes for what we need. If you could perhaps explain for folks if they are incorrect, and if so, how? In terms of that $750,000, I believe it was a grant, or we received $750,000 for new police?
I think it was the Senator, Sheriff Brown put out the $750,000 grant. Again, this, if you look at how much it costs for an officer, over the number of years, if that was three, just multiply that 150 times those six officers over those three years, and how much, again, they don't expect that you're going to hire them for three years, and then they're done. It's a whole career and a commitment by the city. So the $750,000, in fact, I'm also sure, I'd have to do the math, but I'm also sure the whole $750,000 would land here in Whitehall, but it is a grant that's eligible to us, and we are working on getting the six officers out of it. If you do the math, the 75%, they're going to cover that upfront, then the next 50% they're covering half of that. That's 150,000 times, that's $150,000 times six people. The first year, I'm almost eating up an entire $750,000, but it breaks down over the whole three years. That $750,000 would not cover six officers for three years.
If I could, just to add on to that, the, the cost to the city, because it's really for four years, because you absolutely commit to have them in year four, the cost of six officers for four years is $3 million. So the grant was worth a maximum of $750,000 of a $3 million cost just for those four years. So again, there's a misnomer that it's $750,000 annually, or that 750 would cover total. It's a percentage, it's a portion of what these officers, you know, not even 50% of what it would cost to, to fund the officers.
Over four years.
And so, so essentially, it's a nice little help, but it's not the full thing that you need.
When we fill out the grant, it's pretty lengthy. One of the things we have to demonstrate, one is need, two is commitment. Those are two really big things that we have to demonstrate to them. The need is obviously the first thing, but the commitment by the city has to come at that sort of price, and that's a dollar figure and a personnel figure.
Well, I just wanted to clarify that, because there was thoughts out there as to what it meant and so forth, and I just wanted to make sure it was clarified for the public. The Mayor asked my other question, and that had to do with speeders representing Ward One, I'm the woods, among others, and of course, it can talk about often, and certainly, you know, it's just a hot button topic over there. People are sick and tired of it, and one time, someone was stopped because they ran a stop sign. They were behind me, and I saw the police pull them over. I came back, and I stopped, and I applauded the police officer, because he'd actually made a stop and was giving him a ticket. So people over there really definitely like to see that. So thank you, Mayor, for asking that question. That was it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Beth?
I have a question, I'm not sure who can answer this. With a levy, is this an indefinite? These funds are going to continue to come in, or is at some point, as the city's general fund goes, those things will switch out? Is there an end date for the levy?
The levy would be in perpetuity.
Say that again, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
So definitely, no, it would go into perpetuity, the levy would continue.
Any other questions? The Chief or Megan?
Well, Mr. President, if I could, I don't have a question, but just as a supplement, you know, as we've talked about this, you know, for the last number of weeks, you know, I just want to make sure that people really understand, this is not in any way, shape or form asking residents to shoulder, you know, the entire burden. There's been conversation about, you know, can the city, you know, should the city absorb this, you know, into an annual budget? The short answer is, we will be absorbing, you know, a significant portion of this into our annual budget. But, you know, there is not 1.39, 1.4 million dollars worth of cuts that could be made in this budget without reductions in services to our residents, you know, including layoffs that we need to accommodate that. You know, I've been working with Chief Crispin, you know, on this plan for a number of years as it relates to the expansion and renovation of the police station. And, you know, on behalf of the entire administration, I can tell you, you know, we've all had conversations about how to make reductions in operating budgets and to be more efficient and effective with taxpayer dollars, so that the request of the residents was as little as it humanly could be, while still being able to accomplish these goals of providing the space that they need and the number of officers to improve the public safety of Whitehall. So I just wanted to add that, so that people really understood, you know, this is something we've been working on for a while. The COPS grant obviously is a significant help. You know, this is a, you know, $750,000 that doesn't have to come from somewhere else, but it certainly doesn't make a whole pie, and, you know, that'll have budget implications, you know, that we will have to, you know, make in future budgets to accommodate, you know, these six officers in the building.
Thank you.
I have sort of a follow-up, but it might be for Mr. Woodruff, if that's okay?
Yes.
You say, you know, as the budget grows, and then there's the possibility that you can absorb some of this cost. I'm curious, if you do indeed, or are able to absorb some of the cost, how that will affect the levy, and what is taken out of?
Sure, what I was speaking to specifically was, you know, if you factor in, there was a chart, maybe, maybe I'm missing it. You know, it's 1.4 million dollars annually, the levy is going to generate X amount of dollars, and, right there, thank you. So we know that just to start, it's a $600,000 additional increase in the police department's budget to cover the balance of this one. And so when I talk about, you know, the budget growing, it is in some respects to ensure that, you know, we can absorb that $600,000 in, in our budgets. Certainly, you know, we understand that, you know, costs are going to continue to go up, and so, you know, that $600,000 in year four is certainly going to be more than that in year 10, in year 15, year 20, and so on. And so, you know, $600,000, you know, in a new payroll, I mean, you are $25 million in new payroll that would need to come to Whitehall to absorb that, to, to make that up. And so, you know, we are working, you know, day in and day out to ensure that, you know, this was, again, back to my initial point of, we have done everything we can to ensure this was as low a number to residents, while still being confident we could absorb that $600,000 increase. One of the charts that Megan put up, that the Chief spoke to, was there's been a 46% increase in the division of police's budget since 2012. This would add an additional 12%, or 12 to 14% to that budget. So as the police chief and Megan demonstrated, it's necessary, and, you know, we're confident that we can cover that other $600,000 in our budget as potentially our budget grows, and as we obviously make tough decisions.
I would also like to add that you can see definitely the correlation between putting more money into safety services and bringing crime down. That's what we're all about here, is to try to have a safer environment for everyone who lives in Whitehall, and that costs money. It just doesn't happen. We do that through, I think, eyeing everything that we put into the budget, the chief of police. The chief of police has done a great job in handling and managing his budget, and he uses that money for a significant amount of training in order that we can get our officers trained up, so they know what to look for when they're looking for crime, and also to make sure that we hire the best that we can. Also, things get more expensive every year. I know people in Whitehall realize that. We're seeing, you know, people getting gas with the pumps. We're seeing it when we go out to bid on projects for a street paving, and lumber is sky high, all these other things. So, we do understand that, you know, things get higher as we go along. So, that's one of the reasons why, you know, we'll just have an end date on this levy. But, the point is, is that we've done, I think, the maximum that we can do to reduce the amount of crime in Whitehall, but we've got to have more money in which we can make it a safer environment for everyone, and that's what we're here for. That's why I took my leave of office, in order to try to have a safer community for everyone. I think everyone here wants the same thing, is how do we get there? And that's my two cents.
Well, and then, just the very last thing I would mention, Mr. President, just to remind folks, you know, the city is almost entirely funded through income tax, and the vast majority of that income tax is from folks who work in Whitehall that don't live in Whitehall. Roughly, you know, 3% of Whitehall residents work in the city of Whitehall, therefore, their income tax dollars stay in Whitehall. You know, we use the $100,000 valuation, someone in Whitehall with $100,000 valuation is paying roughly $3,000 annually in property tax, of which only $42 of your tax bill goes to the city of Whitehall. The division of police's budget last year was just over $8 million, just over $8 million. And so, you know, the vast majority of the income tax that we collect on an annual basis, the division of police makes up the single largest expense that we have. We've increased it, and, you know, the vast majority of the revenue the city receives are from people who don't necessarily live there. And so, you know, property tax does not, you know, predominantly does not go to the city of Whitehall, you know, whether that's in forms of TIPS or other things, the city would not receive, you know, those property tax dollars, because the city receives virtually nothing on a property tax level.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, both. At this time, I'd accept the motion.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to introduce Resolution 1, 2022, and move for suspension of rules.
Second. A motion has been made by Mr. Bailey, second by Mr. Cantor, change of Resolution 1, 2022, and suspend all rules. Is there any discussion? Ms. Al, please call roll.
Dixon?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second. Motion to adopt by Mr. Bailey, second by Mr. Cantor. Any discussion? Ms. Al, please call roll.
Dixon?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Resolution 1, 2022 has been adopted. We will now move to Resolution 6, 2022, authorize the mayor to enter into a cooperative agreement with LDG, multifamily LLC, and declaring an emergency.
Oh, thank you. I'd like to introduce Resolution 6, 2022, and move for the suspension of the rules.
Second.
There's been a motion by Mr. Cantor, second by Ms. Smith, to introduce Resolution 6, 2022, and to suspend all rules. Is there any discussion? Ms. Al, please call roll.
Dixon?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt, please.
Second.
A motion to adopt by Mr. Cantor, second by Ms. Smith. Any discussion? Ms. Al, please call roll.
Dixon?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Resolution 6, 2022 has been adopted. Our last piece of legislation this evening is Resolution 7, 2022, resolving to approve, then announce certificates, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to please our new auditor by introducing Resolution 7, 2022, and move for suspension of rules.
Second.
And Resolution 7, 2022 has been introduced by Mr. Bailey, second by Mr. Cantor, with the request to suspend all rules. Is there any discussion? Ms. Al, please call roll.
Dixon?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Resolution 7, 2022 has had the rules suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll move to adopt.
Thank you. Second, please.
A motion to adopt by Mr. Bailey, second by Mr. Cantor. Any discussion? Ms. Al, please call roll.
Dixon?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Resolution 7, 2022 has been adopted. This now brings us to our second poll public, and I was remiss in that I did not ask the clerk if there had been any comments sent into council on our first poll public, and so at this time, I'll ask.
Yes, I have one.
Okay. Could you please have that read to the record?
Yes. Jeff Thoburn, 466 Maplewood Avenue, Whitehall, Ohio. In 2002, Luke Skywalker's mom, Pat Amay, said, "To be angry is to be human." Now, 20 years later, and after learning that our right to vote on the Maplewood zoning issue that appeared on our ballots last November was a right that was null and void, it seems an anger exists within many Whitehall residents that I've connected with, and I believe that anger will be reinvigorated each time we residents look at the gargantuan-sized enclave implanted as a city cornerstone at the entrance to the woods of Whitehall. I also believe it's unlikely that a sense of anger will subside during the coming election cycle if voter engagement and mobilization have any merit. Had some semblance of a logical build size for the MAMA property been conceived, then the resulting events, including the Supreme Court case, and the sour feelings, could no doubt have been avoided. No one that I've discussed this folly with is anti-density, but are instead only in agreement how dense the minds were that concocted the build size. If Clay Cooper was being factual when he announced at the library deflect-the-blame meeting that city planners envisioned a five-story enclave, and that Ruda Cooper talked them down to four stories, then a slight tip of the hat to him, as he lies in wait with the lie-taxpayer-funded money source, braring to go on the Maplewood TIF plot. Ironically, it appears that those cautionary tales I read about TIF builds and property tax receipts and inflation are attributing to a 2.83 mil need. I assume that's considered to be a small price to pay by the 31% of owner occupants, so they can exist in the caring hands of the master planners. Lastly, while Whitehall ain't New Albany is an understandable given, New Albany gets a chip manufacturer, and Whitehall getting a fish and chips crammed into a shopping center parking lot is a pricelessly comedic comparison I couldn't avoid. Thank you, and thanks DSCC.
Does anybody else in the public like to come forward for poll public? Please state your name and address to the record.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council, mayor, directors.
Name, address, please.
Mike Shannon, 5166 Etna Road. It's serendipitous that I was here this evening on other business. I was not aware that this was coming before council this evening, and I want to thank the leadership that I see before me for being proactive and addressing what is not only going on in our community that's going on in the state and in the country with the men and women in blue, as they try to perform their duties. By sheer coincidence, today is the 39th anniversary of my father, Joe Shannon, passing away. My father was a Columbus police officer, his grandfather was a Columbus police officer, and his great-grandfather was on the mountain cavalry that originally policed our streets when they were made of dirt. And I'm proud to say that I have a daughter in law enforcement who actually served under the chief in his previous lifetime at the state agency. And it's hard to put in words what the police mean to me personally, but I can't deviate from one thing that's overriding in my mind, and that's Terry McDowell. With his loss, there was a lot of positive with the founding of Behind the Bad, and the Whitehall community has always held their safety forces, police and fire, in highest regard, to appropriately memorialize Terry's place in our history, while at the same time making essential, essential improvements to law enforcement through additional manpower and improved services. I mean, that building is our cake, as is everything attendant to trying to be a state of the art law enforcement agency. So, I just want to commend you. I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart, and I must also mention that my wife, Jane, is making me say the following. She has a real interest in the school board and has discussed it appropriately with the chairman of command there about resuscitating Safety Town. She thinks it's a very, very important component to deal with what we're dealing with right now. By the time some of these kids get to junior high, it's too late. By the time some of these kids get to sixth grade, it's too late. By getting to them in kindergarten and first grade, and letting them see that our police and fire officials are real people, and putting them through that Safety Town, I just think it's priceless. And I'm hopeful that, concomitant with the school board's cooperation, and maybe concomitant with the passage of this levy, there may be enough personal power to consider Safety Town. With that, I thank you for your indulgence, and again, I thank you on the cap of myself, my family, and my father. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
I live at 771 Robinwood Avenue, and this is a question sort of about the levy. Being the real estate agent, a lot of people, and myself, I would look up my property value on Zillow, and I would say, "I could sell today for $220." So, I just wanted to clarify and ask the question, is it market value, or is it the taxable value that I'm paying my property taxes based on, on the auditor's page? Just to clear that up for everyone, I'm sure that's going to be a popular question online.
Sure. I mean, Mr. President, if I could, just to answer that real quick.
Mr. Woodruff, I would like to say one thing. Typically, this is not a conversational type thing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, 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 but that's a very good valid question, so I will allow it. I think it should be answered.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. What I would tell you is it is absolutely based on the value of your home, based on the Brent County Auditor, not what a real estate agent believes that you could sell it for, but absolutely based on what the property is worth according to the Brent County Auditor.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good question.
Very good question. If there's nothing further for poll public, now brings this community day board.
I don't have a.
Karen, okay. Does anybody else have anything for community day board?
We got none.
Okay, that's a rarity, but so it is. At this point, we'll poll council. Mr. Dixon?
Thank you, Mr. President. A few things to go over. I wanted to say that, you know, after last week's meeting, I had a meeting with Mr. Woodruff and the mayor, and I have stated, I think, pretty vocally, my concerns about the budget and the levy and so forth, and they were very helpful, and given me a lot of information. It was really a nice meeting, so I thank them for that. And I still, I still have a couple feelings about all of that, and I've asked the mayor to meet with me post this meeting to go over those things. We have a few months to think about things in terms of the tax levy and so forth for the police. I do want to say, when I was campaigning, that one of my bullet points was that I am 1% for law enforcement, and I wrote "with justice," that's how I feel about it, but always, you know, I'm probably, as I talked to Chief Crispin, my stack of calls to the Whitehall Police Department are probably very thick, because as a neighborhood person that's in the neighborhood and watches things, I called in things that are going wrong in the neighborhood. So, from this point on until May, I think the community here, and of course, Facebook and beyond, have a lot to discuss, and I hope it's robust and productive. A couple other things. I did want to thank Mr. Salter for his presentation with the Community Mediation Services of Central Ohio. I thought that was terrific. I would like to thank, well, first of all, congratulations, Megan, on your new baby. I know a little about it, but congratulations. And chief for their presentations. I wanted to congratulate all of the employees, Casey Thomas, Ben Leonard, Tanner Williams, and Chuck Thacker. I'd like to thank him for matching his gray suit with a gray mask. I thought that was a nice touch. As well, I would like to thank the poll public folks, Jackie Plank for an excellent question, Mr. Shannon. Whenever we can mention Terry McDowell's name, it's a really good thing. Mr. Jones for his terrific words about inclusion, and I don't know the gentleman's last name, I know him as Jeff, but I find him to be very intelligent, and I liken him to Mark Twain. He's got a very sharp sense of humor, and I appreciate it, and I thank them all for their poll publics. I spoke to Shannon, I think it's Warner or Werner, today with my committee, and we've scheduled a meeting for next week. Maybe that's community day board, but that's not really community, I guess. But anyway, we've got a meeting next week to talk about the senior center and everything else, and I look forward to that. I want to thank everyone here for joining us tonight. I'm sure you're sleepy. I used to be out there for many years, and coffee helps. And I'd like to thank everyone on Facebook for watching as well. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Ms. Elmore?
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I'd like to say, this is a really, it was a really, really good council, being very informative, a lot of good questions, thanking everybody that called to poll public or even came up to speak regarding poll public. Your input and the things that you add to council help us in the decisions that we make. I'd like to congratulate all the employees of the year. When you have employees that rise above the occasion, they do need to be recognized, and I am a big proponent for recognizing good work in good employees, so it does not go unnoticed. I want to thank Marcus Salter for educating us on the work that QMHF does in providing housing stability and homeless prevention. He has been a friend of mine since the 80s, and I don't want to date myself, but just to know that there are people out there and services out there that we don't generally get an opportunity to connect with, to see how they would help our community. So, I'm glad that there are people that hold certain positions that we can bring in and educate us as a community of things we can do to alleviate some of the homelessness and help in affordable housing and elections. help in affordable housing and edictions. I also want to, I want to speak to an observance of Martin Luther King Day that many people observed, and oftentimes we remember Dr. Martin Luther King as, "I had a dream." But he was more than just a dreamer. He was an activist. He was a fighter. And during this time, we are really struggling as a country with voting rights. And I'm just going to take an excerpt of what Dr. Martin Luther King stated regarding the speech he delivered regarding "Give Us The Ballot." And it was three years ago regarding the Supreme Court rendered a decision regarding the Brown versus the Board of Education, which was a racial segregation of public schools being unconstitutional. And it was simple, eloquent, unequivocal language, "A decision for all men of goodwill. The decision has not gone without opposition and risen to ominous proportions. States have opened up in defiance. Even more, all types of conniving methods are still being used to present Negroes," this was Dr. Martin Luther King's words. "From becoming registered voters, the denial of the sacred right is a tragic betrayal of the highest mandates of our democratic tradition." Dr. King exhorted the president at the time, Dwight Allison Eisenhower, and members of Congress to ensure voting rights for all people. Some of the other speeches, or it goes on further to say, or talk about the benefits of giving us the right to vote and what it would do. And he was a fighter for justice. And just to remember the legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King, we also need to remember that he was a civil rights activist who fought for voting rights, which is an issue that we are still fighting today. The speech that he gave was in nineteen fifty-seven. We are in twenty twenty-two and still looking for the passage of voting rights. And so, although there's a dream that we have, until we put our feet to the fire and continue to pursue the issues of justice, social justice, and peace, we will still be back in the nineteen fifty-seventh. So when we say do not let the dream die, it's for all of us to not let a dream die, but to continue to fight so that we fulfill the legacy of what Dr. Martin Luther King had done in the first place. And so, I would just say for all of us to stay strong and courageous, calm yet positive, work passionately and unrelently, relentlessly, and to not lose heart, because it's easy to lose heart with all of us, or become bitter, but to meet hate with love, love your enemies, forgive those who speak all manners of evil and treat you in unbecoming ways. Last but not least, love conquers hate, and keep moving because the struggle continues. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Elmore. Very nice words. Ms. Conneson?
Want to thank you all for viewing. Want to thank you also for coming here. Congratulations to our employees of the year. Really wasn't going to say anything because it's five minutes before This Is Us is on. And it is, it's five minutes.
We are.
It's the final day right now. However, today was a rough day for me. I work in humor resources, and what you just said hit pretty hard because today I took care of a racial discrimination investigation at work. As humor resource people, we have to be, you know, we listen to all sides. We don't show a whole lot of emotion when you're hearing things, but it does hit hard. Just like you said, there's, to me, there's no room for hate. We are one people. We should act that way. And if I can say something to the Whitehall community is love my neighbor, treat my neighbor with respect, see if you can help them. And again, thank you all for viewing.
Thank you. Mr. Cantor?
Thank you, Mr. President. When you're in the middle, pretty much everybody says anything, have the same thing. So with that, Councilperson Elmore and Conneson, what you said was true. And I thank you for those words. It's a tough society that we live in right now, and hopefully it'll get better. It's going to be a long time before it does, but hopefully it will get better. I'd like to thank everybody that is watching, that is in attendance tonight, and for the letter from Jeff. The employees of the year, very good selection this year. I'd like to know how the chiefs and the directors actually go about picking one person, because it has to be one hell of a tough choice. It has to be a tough choice. But your selections this year were right on. Congratulations. It's nice that the chief comes out here and says that about yourself and what you said about Tanner, because the public doesn't know what you do behind the scenes, and it's just not by coming into work and just sitting there waiting for the bell to ring or a call from dispatchers to go in. So I thank you all very, very much. Chief Chrisman and Megan, great presentation. I've had many calls, and I've had a few calls. I've spoken to many people when I'm out in public, which I am quite a bit, and they were asking questions. Even asked me a question that Jackie Plank came up and asked, which was a very good question. So your answers that I gave were right on. Mr. Salter, I'm glad that he came in. I thank him. Mr. Shannon, and he left his wife, Safety Town. I'm a hundred percent in agreement with that. I do think it's needed. Maybe the schools in the city can figure something out, or we can go back to the Safety Town. I know I've had five of my six kids so far go to Whitehall City Schools, four of which went to Safety Town. There are districts here in Franklin County that you can actually go to the schools and see a Safety Town that is built, and it's a really, really nice facility that they So at that, I'd like to thank everybody for coming, and I told you, girls, it's going to be a long meeting, and I'm into FBI, and it does start at nine o'clock. Conneson? Yeah, I'll see you in a couple minutes, girls. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Mr. Potter, thank you for everybody that came tonight. Congratulations to the employees, and thank you for everybody that's watching. As someone very close to the end, as Mr. Cantor said, a lot of great things have been said that I'm in agreement with, and I look forward to learning from each of you with my, my new beginnings on council. And I thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Bailey?
Thank you, Mr. President, and my colleagues did such a good job of covering everything. And being last, if I have anything to say, I'm just making it up. But I would like to thank all of you, fellow legislators, for the things you cast tonight, because I'm very proud of some of those things. I think they are very important, and the chief spoke on return and investment, and if you look at that aspect of it, it's definitely there. Our city services are far and now the best anywhere. But I would like to recognize somebody who was a past council member and a past sitting president of council, and through some of the work that he did with his fellow colleagues way back when that is affecting the results that we're seeing today. So I'd just like to recognize Jim Graham. He doesn't know where he is, but he is here. It's good to see you, Jim. Thanks. That's all I got.
Thank you. And then I truly am last. I would like to thank Mr. Salter. I thought there was some very interesting information he shared, and those numbers were quite staggering, and he kind of brings that to the forefront, so something I'm definitely very mindful of. Also, I'd like to congratulate the city employees on being recognized for their outstanding work. Megan, chief, thank you for your presentation. I think that was very informative, so that's much appreciated. And I think that's about it. Everything else has been said. I think some very good words you said this evening, so...
Mr. President, before you, Director Sorrell, thank you so much for your presence tonight. We haven't seen you in such a long time. We hope to see you again soon. There you go.
Mr. President, I have one other thing. Move to a adjournment.
Second, okay, yeah. Nice sneaking that in. So Mr. Bailey's made a motion to adjourn, second by Mr. Cantor. Is there any discussion? Ms. Ollie, please call roll.
Dixon?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Conneson?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
We are adjourned.